Roll call.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Egley.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Clipper.
Here.
Yeah, before you, the March 7th regular council meeting minutes. For your approval, any additions? Corrections? Entertain a motion to accept them?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Yet for you, the bills for your approval. Any questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Page two, one, two, three, the fourth one down. We needed an engineer to tell us how to do a valve replacement. Pocahontas charged $1,003.30 and it says water treatment plant valve replacement.
This is for the... Yeah, that would be for the valve job that's getting ready to start up.
Say again?
Those sixteen valves that we're changing out?
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that's part of that, their engineering there.
Ah.
That's through the county, we're getting that money.
Right.
So it's required.
Part of it, yes.
Okay, I just couldn't figure why we would hire Pocahontas to tell us how to change a valve. Okay.
Nope, not just one valve.
Forgive me.
Any other questions?
I have no other questions, and if nobody else does, please pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Same.
Orders and commissions, I didn't see any minutes, anybody? Have any notes on that? Okay, council committee reports, I see the water sewer committee met March the 16th.
Yeah.
Minutes are in the packet.
We hit on a couple things, there was a request for sewer tap, we did have to refer to Troy's legal expertise on a couple things for, figure out which ordinance is applied there. The process does go, for the record, annexations required prior to tapping into our sewer system, and you do have, if you're gonna tap into sewer system, you also have to tap into water. So, that direction, I believe, was given to the homeowner. And then, I think Cory's gonna hit on the next topic, wastewater treatment plant operator. And then, we touched on the splat, the topic of the splash pad, and I think that's gonna get talked about here a bit with park board, so, that's all I had.
Any questions for the committee? Okay, any other committee reports? Okay. Administrators report.
I'm sure most of you've already seen that CSX is back in town, working on North Main Street, right up. Again, ninety days is what they're saying, the only explanation that I have gotten from them is they're just doing steel repair. So take that for what it's worth, I have no idea. Just some quick notes about the park, Gary and Val have been busy with cleanup down there. We have taken down some smaller trees in the pavilion yard that are dead, and there is three of them out on North Main Street, at the curve there by the basketball court that we're gonna be taking down. They're pretty much dead trees, so more for safety reasons, they're gonna come down. Street department will be painting those additional courts at the tennis court for the pickleball, we're hoping to get it done this week, but it'll probably be next week. Energy optimizers will hopefully be starting in June on all of our village buildings to get everything switched over to LED. Apparently, there's like a six to eight week lead time on some of the supplies that they're gonna need. And then, as Taylor mentioned, for the wastewater treatment plant, with Joel Jacob, who we interviewed a while back, and I actually offered him the position the first time, but we couldn't come to terms. Since then, he has come down with his salary request to $67,000. He is looking to bring his three weeks vacation over, and then all of his sick time. We had a discussion in the water sewer committee meeting about that, and I would like to recommend the hiring of Joel Jacob.
Okay.
I'll recommend that we hire him, drug and screen and all that.
Six, six months probation.
Any questions on this?
Did you talk to him after we met? After we met?
Many times, actually.
Did you work out a start date?
April 20th.
IFM.
I didn't wanna jump the gun.
Right, right.
After approval, then, yes, I would send Neil an email tomorrow.
I'll make the motion for the Mayor's recommendation.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion before we vote? Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Anything else, Cory?
Real quick, can, for the energy optimizers, I didn't recall what their terms were on the LED retrofits on the lighting, can you update, can you refresh me, Emery, on that? Is that, I guess, how is that all being funded?
Each different department's paying for their own building.
Okay.
I saw the email. Just, just before I came up here.
That was last year, I think.
Do you have a breakout on per building cost?
Yes.
Can I get that from you tonight before we leave?
Now, I was gonna ask real quick, Cory, the alert system, is that in progress right now?
There's still be, there'll be a training process.
Okay.
It'll be myself, Chief Denning, and the Mayor, if he'd like to be part of that as well.
Do they have a time schedule when they think that would be up and running with the public?
We were, we were hoping April 1st, but I don't think it's gonna go live April 1st.
Do you have any updates on the demo on High Street that was supposed to start, be the 17th?
Yeah, they're behind schedule. They're out at Ricky Slattery's property, just south of town here, tearing down an old house there, and once they're done with that, they're supposed to come into town and take care of the coal property, so. I don't look for it to be this week, but hopefully early next week.
I talked to him Saturday late, it was probably six, seven o'clock. He had both the buildings down and loaded, and. He kinda thought maybe by week's end, this week's end, that he would be done up there.
Hopefully, I'd like to see it.
Did, Mayor, you were gonna talk to Cory and, and, you know, 'cause we talked about just the general, how he had cleaned it all up, and then it's kinda getting back, did, did you ever have a chance, opportunity to talk to him?
I will, though.
And then, one more question, just with the CSX road closure, do we have it, does the, is the state aware of that?
Yeah, that's how I got informed.
Okay.
So ODOT had moved, or emailed me that CSX was shutting it down. So, they won't be through until after June 1st, so if they stick to their ninety days, CSX sticks to their ninety days, then they should be gone, but, you know how ninety days lasted last time?
Crazy, what, 270?
ODOT doesn't think it'll be a big issue, since they're working overhead, they still think they can come through and pave it.
But then, they're gonna go right back down to Musaargon, so. Yeah, we're gonna have, either the paving on, on 18, or the paving on Musaargon's gonna get, we're gonna have a problem, I can foresee it.
That's not gonna get, well, to the county, you mean, or to the state on Musaargon?
County.
The county's stopping on CSX.
They stopped it down.
We just paved up the, oh.
They're gonna stop at the intersection.
Right.
But they're gonna widen also, I'm told, so. So, yeah, they're, they'll be back into, you know, the meat of it all.
Yeah.
So that'd be something to watch, Cory.
Make sure, yeah, we got that, some coordination going on there, so the county's not starting there.
You get, I'm gonna say maybe another year, maybe two, and you're gonna have this. Just the snow, why it just can be.
Okay, any other questions for the administrator? Okay, solicitors report, Troy?
First thing's Resolution 2022-0-04, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, granting authority to the village administrator to submit an application for grant monies through the Safe Routes to School project and declaring an emergency. We discussed this one the last time we were here, they had just submitted like this, but they need this for the file down at ODOT.
Maybe we suspend the rules?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Beverly.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
So, second, third readings, a resolution 2022-04 by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, granting authority to the village administrator to submit an application for grant monies through the Safe Routes to School project and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
If I could. Safe Routes to School has been handled primarily by the school. But would anybody, I know we've been kept well informed from them, but does anybody or poll council, do they wanna maybe have Keith come in and, and discuss, or is everybody happy with how, how everything's going?
We know all, they're going down High Street, right? All the way, yeah, from the Cougar Station, or Defiance Avenue, I call it.
What word ended?
Be the opposite side of the street, though, right?
Yeah, opposite side.
In our side, what word ends all the way down?
Be out by Dairy. And then go out to Dairy D.
But I know, wasn't, wasn't Cory mentioning at the last meeting about utilizing some of that sidewalk allocation for somewhere else in town?
If there's leftover money, then, you said, maybe Columbus Street down by the hospital.
There might be $2,000, several thousand dollars left.
She, yeah, she.
Possibly.
Possibly be able to do like 2,000 linear feet of either replacement or new sidewalk. I would be in favor of new sidewalk and not replacing somebody's.
Yes, yes.
So I don't know if we need Keith, does everybody kinda know where they're going?
And we had maps, two, three meetings ago, we had maps, and I'm sure you're well, well rested on everything of it, but. I just wanted to touch bases to make sure everybody was.
Yeah.
I don't wanna have everything start and, and then somebody goes, well, hey, I wish I'd have known that, you know?
You said there was gonna be a crosswalk down by what, Saint Don Lutheran?
Close to what, 916, I think?
Yeah, it would be closer to like Dave Batterseal's property.
Oh, right there, okay.
Well, that would be the second one.
Yeah, two of them, one's down by Columbus, so one would be down there with a push button activated.
Two of them.
Solar powered.
Updating the one at Columbus?
It'd be one react, yeah. That sounds like, it's gonna be both of them, it'll be a push button. The other crosswalk, what, 916 area, I think?
Yeah, just west of Dave Batterseal's property and a, and a lot by the ditch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay. We suspend that? Did we vote?
Yeah, that's all done.
Everything we said.
Second one?
Yeah, the next is Resolution 2022-05, first reading by caption only, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2022 and declaring an emergency, the reason for the emergency being it's gotta be submitted by 5:00 PM on April 29th.
Make a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
So, second, third readings, a resolution 2022-05 by caption only, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2022 and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Clipper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
I think this might be a good time to bring up about the park usage agreement, sexual misconduct liability, Troy, I know Pat's here, so this would be a good time to discuss.
The, the Mayor called me, was it last week?
By Friday.
Friday. And advised me that the, I believe it was the baseball association, had been attempting to get their insurance policy, which is part of what we passed at the last meeting, as you recall, part of what we included in there was that they had to have not only a, basically a general liability policy, but they also had to have some type of endorsement or rider that covered sexual misconduct, for lack of a better term. And it's my understanding from the Mayor, as passed along by Pat, that initially, they were having difficulty finding that, and then, as I understood it, they, they may have found someplace that issues it, but it's extremely cost prohibitive, to be polite, as far as the cost of that. I did put out a little message on my municipal attorney list serve to see if anybody else had had experience with it. The other thought that I had today, actually, when I was talking to the Mayor, is I know on insurance related issues, this wouldn't be the village getting a policy, Conrad has brought up issues like that in the past, and I thought that may be a good source to console, as far as what he thought about that, and, you know, I'm sure he's familiar in the type of endorsement and cost and things like that, but I guess at some point. Unfortunately, brings back an old issue, obviously, the whole point of that type of endorsement was to cover any liability the village might have, for one of the primary reasons that we debated for three years about doing background checks, I mean, that was not the only reason, but was probably the main reason that most people did. So, if you don't have that type of coverage, and you just have general liability, arguably, and again, it would depend on the policy, arguably. There could be some exclusions from coverage, and so while it's still important for them to all have general liability policies in case, you know, somebody gets hurt, or, or something like that, it may not potentially cover the risk we were hoping to cover by requiring, so.
I would say, I've been working with the ball association, and today, I just got a, it's a rough estimate, they're still working on a few things, but they do have a proposal for general liability and an abuse and molestation rider for about $500, so. That's something that's.
That's a lot better, I mean, from, from what was told originally, what the quote was gonna be for something that was extremely cost prohibitive, I would say, you know, with, nothing that we could reasonably expect anybody to ever. Because they're gonna start next week?
April 1st, some of them.
April 1st, yeah.
So that's, you know, so next week. Well, maybe if, if that's the case, maybe.
That's not just one entity either, that's Little League, and that's junior, or, that'd be a, you know, high baseball, varsity baseball.
Yeah, the softball association is truly gonna play on the Little League Diamonds, like I was mentioning previously, same thing.
Who is?
If the softball association, I know at the beginning.
Oh, or Little League?
Yeah, softball, yeah.
So basically, anybody using.
Question I brought up from one of them, what if, what if, what if he did one or the other, one if, one said, we do all the background checks, and does that overdo the other?
I, I said, I, I mean, that's not, I mean, that's, I guess.
You gonna make this go another three?
I, I don't want you, I want it to be, I want that in the worst place, bud.
So, it sounds like it's on their court right now? Right, wait till they come back?
Yeah.
That's what they had wanted.
There was one more, there was one more form that needed filled out with this, with this other insurance company.
Okay.
So that'd be good. So maybe that's, at this point, a non-issue. Something to keep in mind in the future, I mean, I assume the reason those are so cost prohibitive is you could imagine, anytime there's a claim, it's not like you're cooking, you know, car insurance, you got little accidents, you got big accidents, that's something, if there's a claim, they're probably paying out quite a bit of money on it, so that, that would justify charging a little higher premium.
In form, you know, if they come through.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Because it is an issue. I want there to be baseball, you know, that's the long line, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Troy? Okay, thank you. Department has chief, police chief?
I don't have any.
That's good, right? Fire chief, Bruce?
Yeah, I have nothing either.
Okay, park director, I think we have, oh, okay, Val?
First of all, we were down to the pool today, and we see the main seam and the liner is split. I haven't, you know, I haven't contacted nobody if it should be fixed. I don't know from the winner, it just. Looks like it's split.
That could be patched and not require a complete and liner, couldn't it?
That's what I'd have to find out.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we're doing now, is patching the bad spots.
It's already been patched once.
The seam has?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can see it.
Hopefully, it can, and hopefully, this, this other item that we're discussing can come to fruition, and, and we'll just haul dirt in there.
Whereas I've got, I've already ordered chlorine, I've already ordered.
Oh, it'll, yeah, it'll be open this year.
And my other suggestion was, every year, we have pool parties after the pool closes, and I was wondering, since the lifeguards didn't get a raise, if they could have the money from the pool parties.
But they work, they usually have to work those, they.
Yeah. They get paid their regular wages, but I thought, if they can split, it takes usually two of them, and you can split.
How much is it to rent the pool out?
Well, it's 25, but I'm thinking about moving it up to.
That's pretty inexpensive for, for a pool rental.
It's for, per hour.
Per hour, that's pretty.
Super cheap.
That's pretty cheap.
I know it. And the lifeguards only make 9.69.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
What kind of, what kind of, in, in general, what kind of money are we looking at, are we splitting up $100, we splitting up $500?
It's whatever, how many pool parties we get, and it's, usually, they rent it for two hours.
Oh, just two hours?
Yeah.
So you're proposing that we just pass on that fee to the lifeguards, or you're paying them at the end of the year, the bonus of whatever that is?
I'm not sure how.
How's that work, Cheryl?
Yeah, I was getting right.
Is that stipend, or?
Cheryl or Troy?
Something under the table.
Never happened before, so. However you vote, is how I will pay them, and they did get a raise, by the way.
Everyone got 3%.
Yeah.
They just didn't get, they didn't get a raise when it comes to benefits, because they don't have any insurance right now.
Right.
What would you propose, Val?
I would say per paycheck, per pay, just so they'd have it through the whole time.
So if there's a party within that pay period, it just gets split accordingly?
I mean, I'd keep track.
Keep the records.
I'd raise the rate, too, no offense, but that, that's pretty cheap, aren't they, right?
Would you go higher?
It has to go through payroll, 'cause of ERS and taxes and all that.
Right.
To raise the rate?
No.
To pay them, that money has to go through payroll. I bet you it was 15 years ago we quit, they have not raised any raises.
Okay, any comments on that?
And usually, the, assuming the pool parties are after hours, in the evenings, maybe the off days, you know, it'll be.
And they sign up, whoever wants to work it.
Right.
Sure you'll have a lot of volunteers.
Do you have enough?
It's getting kinda hard.
Do you have enough lifeguards right now?
Yeah, now we do, we got six.
Okay, so will this put them in to overtime, will that affect that aspect of it? Okay.
I'd make a motion that we pass on the pool rental fee to the lifeguards that are working those parties.
I think it's a wonderful idea, I'll be right behind you.
Okay. In our discussion before we vote. Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Be done.
That's all you got, Val, any questions for Val, any other questions?
Two employees that are coming back.
Okay.
You want me to say that now? Or wait till we get all the lifeguards?
Okay. Okay, while we're on the, any other questions for Val, or Gary? Okay, as far as the park, Lindsay, you're here for the park board, the president, introduce some guests that wants to speak.
I have to tell you guys, I was thinking, it was about a year ago to the date that this place was on fire with park issues, so, I am so excited, because we have some positivity tonight to talk about, so. We have two really awesome things that could happen at the park, one is a splash pad, and the Schmitz are here on behalf of the Hicksville Foundation, to give you kind of the vision, and then I thought they could present, and then I could come back and tell you, as a park board, some of the options that we came up with. The other is, there's been a committee for the last couple months that have been meeting for a quality of life initiative to bring a trail system to Hicksville, both around the perimeter of the park and the well field, and Mr. Dick Altman is here to talk about that, so, I'm just gonna sit down and let the gentleman take over, and then if you have questions at the end, I'll be happy to come up, how's that sound?
Okay, sure.
Whoever you wanna hear from first?
Looks like Jim's ready.
Yeah, Jimmy Schmidt up there, we'll make fun of him.
Step up the podium.
I don't know if Karen wants to hand out some of these renderings that we have, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about, but, like she said, Karen and I.
This is not who we're, we've signed up to go with anybody yet, this is just, just an idea of what it's.
For instance?
What it's takes to.
Right, we haven't mapped it anywhere yet.
Different sizes, and all that stuff.
Yeah, Karen and I started the foundation several years ago, and we're trying to get it revamped, it's kind of fallen on dead ears in the last few years, so we got it revamped, and we got Greg and Lisa Slattery on the committee, on the board with us, and Penny and Cheryl Vetter, and one of the first things we talked about, it's always been, maybe it's because we have grandchildren now, but. And, and I know they're going to different communities to go to splash pads, so it, it's just been a, a vision of ours to try to get that going, and Kirk, and Kirk Collins is also on the committee, and, and he manages our funds, it's done through the Defiance Area Foundation. But he was, one of his clients has shown interest in making a, what I would say, a very generous donation, I don't know who the person is, and I'm not gonna share the amount, but it'd be good seed money to get, get started, and obviously, the foundation's got some, we have some money, too, so. At this point. We can't go out and try to get the project off the ground until we have a location, and I know there's different opinions on, on where, where it should go, but we certainly think it should go at the park, and I'll, I'll let Lindsay kinda touch on that a little bit more, because they, they met at the park, but. So that's, we're just kinda in the infant stages of it right now. Cost-wise, it's probably gonna be a minimum of a $600,000 project, maybe, maybe even more, we wanna do it right, we wanna have it big enough to attract other people to the community, too, just like our kids are going to other communities, so. Different systems they have, the pump and dump, which I don't think too many people are really interested in that, the company that sent us that information, they said most of their towns are going to that, because it's about half the cost. But the number I'm throwing out there would be a recirculating system, as far as maintenance, I believe they said once. I believe they said once a week it would have to be treated for testing.
Right.
So that's where we're at right now, we have not officially met with them because until we get a site decided and have them come down and talk to us and, and kind of get us, get a layout of it, so. What you have in front of there is just some renderings or different ideas that they have, which I just, I think it'd be a, be a great thing for the community, so. Any questions?
You have definitely taken this further than what it's ever went before, but does anybody have some type of a guesstimate of what it would cost to maintain this thing whilst it's in and going? The main thing I would hate to see us build something and then we can't operate it because we can't afford the maintenance on it. Does anybody have any kind of an idea, is it ten thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year?
We, we have not formally met with them, this is just sent through an email that Kirk contacted them, this is the same company did the one in Defiance, NAY, and they're getting ready to start one in Archibald. And we've reached out to another company, we've not heard back from them, obviously, we're gonna get, we're gonna get two or three different ideas on it. So I can't answer that, Ron, as far as how much maintenance is gonna be. Obviously, the equipment's gonna have to be in an enclosed area.
Right.
As far as weather. And I would see it as basically open the same time as what the pool is, what Memorial Day to, like Labor Day timeframe?
Absolutely.
Right.
And are you looking at this with, with hopes of doing away with the pool?
Well, I think that's the discussion of the, of the council. I think there is, from what I've been told, I've not been down there, but it sounds like there is a fair amount of kids that, that use that pool.
Yes.
But I also know, it's like you said, it's, it's close to getting filled with dirt if, if the village doesn't.
Yeah.
You can only repair something so long. I think it'd be nice to have both personally because of age difference, you know, younger children are gonna use a splash pad, teenagers probably are not gonna use a splash pad. If they are, they're probably gonna cause more problems than they are if they were at the pool.
See, back when I was on park board, we looked, we looked into this and I got some prices for some, not as elaborate, but quite a bit smaller. And we were looking at putting it on the backside of the, about where the diving board is and connecting the fence with the pool. So it was open the same hours as the pool hours and we were always told that if you had a recirculation system like these, which is much better, a lot more expensive, but you had to have a lifeguard on duty at all times.
Is that true?
That's.
That's what we were told back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, when we were discussing this, if not earlier.
We visited one in Defiance a couple of years ago, they, they don't, they do not have a lifeguard, so.
So I think from what I'm told, the staff is, they're, they require staff with testing, water testing, it's not.
Circulation would be as far as a lifeguard, right?
Because treating the water, make sure they have contaminated water when the kids are in it, was the reason why.
Testing for that is once a week.
That's what he was saying, that's, that's what we were, we were told differently a few years back.
We originally thought it was like three times a day and it was checked into and it is a, it's a once a week test, so like they probably come with technology and who knows what, you know?
Yeah.
From years ago.
The cost of recirculation was quite a bit more back then also and we were worried about the pump and dump system just because we're separating all of our storming water now and it doesn't look good when we raised rates to the people in town and then we're dumping water just down the drain, it doesn't look good.
That's what Defiance put in was the pump and dump, and I'm not sure about Archibald, NAY is, they dumped the water, less maintenance.
Didn't have the cost to.
Yeah, so that's something.
That's a lot of water to dump though.
Yeah, and at the time Kent Miller would know more about it because he looked at, you know, however many gallons a minute would be running and however many hours a day it was gonna run and how many hour, how many gallons a week and a month and during those three, four months when the pool was open, about how much water the sewer department was gonna have to treat and how much water, you know, from the water department. And that was concerned from Kent back then was how much water it was gonna take.
Because that's another one of the things, Jim, is, is everything that goes down to the sewer plant has to be treated because of the chlorine.
Right.
That was a concern back then was how much water it used, and I know we, we looked at motion activated sensors on all the equipments, they weren't just running twenty-four seven. You know, once it opened, it was, kid had to walk up to it to activate it for water to come out.
Yeah, obviously, we're in the infant stages on this and as we move forward, we could certainly have the company that we decide on would come and certainly give a presentation, an explanation on how everything works. But where we're standing now, I mean, I would really like to, we would really like to get this thing under construction next spring. It's, the equipment and everything would have to be decided and ordered by the end of the summer. So that's why we're looking to try to, you know, to come up with a site and to fundraise. We need to show the people of the community where it's gonna set, here's a rendering, here's what it's gonna look like, here's how it's gonna operate. And we're, we're confident that we can get the, get the money raised to do it.
My thought, Jim, is maybe tonight have, if, if council's in acceptance with the proposal, kind of the idea and the concept, which I think we have been for a number of years, this is again, moving up in the steps of it, but maybe getting with the company and looking, I know we talked at, at the park board meeting a little bit about placement and areas.
She wanted to tell you some of the places that we came up with or?
Not, not, my, this is my thought on it, you know, we keep talking about, we have different ideas, we have some great placements already thought about, but having the company come in and take a look at where the water lines are, you know, if we want a pool and a pad together combo, if that's an option, do we use the same type of filtering system, the same chemicals to treat both systems instead of having two separate systems? And having the cost of two separate, so my thought was is, I mean, I, I was always for it from the get-go personally, but maybe we need some more discussion on, on if everybody's willing to go along with the project, you know, through a vote and then having the company come in and, you know, the size, the footprint, we talked about the footprint, location and.
I think the tough thing you're gonna run into there is you're gonna force the foundation or whomever to choose a construction company without knowing size, location, and price. So that's, they're, they're working with two or three different companies right now to try and get ballpark pricing and that, if we don't, if they don't know where it's gonna go, how do you, I guess, how are we expecting them to move forward with, because you're, what you're saying is have them come in and.
That might change the structure of the whole cost of the project though. I mean, like I said, we, we keep talking about fixing a pool, you know, is that something we're gonna, is that another proposal that would be tied into this? Maybe it was just a thought, like I said, if, if the systems can be combined together.
Question for you, Troy, if the foundation and a donor are funding and say that the community is funding this project, that can all be done private market, right?
It gets a little sticky because it's still, you can't circumvent like bidding process and stuff like that because of where the funding's come from. I'd have to look into it a little bit more, but I know like over in Defiance where they raised a bunch of money to do it, they had an organization that raised the money and people matched and anything like that, and then they actually turned that money over to the city and the city paid for everything, so the city was the one that was in charge of like the contracting and the.
Why, so why was that?
I think it's because of the rules about you can't, it was gonna be on city-owned property.
Wouldn't it?
What they did over there, what I just told Ron, is and I don't know the technicalities of it all, but they had that other pool out there that they decided they weren't gonna open anymore, they went down from two pools to one, and they used some of the onsite facilities, not only where the restrooms and stuff, they used that for restrooms, but also to house the equipment and the pumps and everything like that. They used that existing equipment, filled in their pool, you know, like we were talking about, and then used that existing piping and updated it and everything like that. That, I, I, and again, I wasn't involved in that, only on the tertiary, but that was my understanding was is because it was gonna be on public property and was gonna be maintained by the city and they couldn't circumvent the, all of those other processes by doing that. And so basically the outside entity raised the money and then.
Would that be something, I guess, you can look into and confirm?
Yeah.
Because if these prices are quoted as private, private dollars, you're, you need to one point five. You need to one point five, so.
Yeah.
If the goal is six hundred thousand, if by the village ending up running it, it might be one point two. So obviously you're raising that bar tremendously.
I can, like I said, I wasn't really involved in that, so I'll ask, I'll quick ask a couple of people and they'll tell me.
Because that would also then, if we have to go that route, you couldn't work with a specific company then, correct? You would have to have it.
Well, you'd have to bid it, but you don't have to take the lowest, you know, I mean, you know, that's the lowest of best, but yeah.
But how do you, how do you choose a company to work with at the beginning stages if you have to go out to bid?
Well. Can we do an RFP and, and just do a little investigating?
Well, is that us doing everything or is that the foundation working on?
Well, I don't think it would hinder any of the workings if we as, as the village did it with an RFP. But once we figure out, okay, yeah, this is where it's gonna go and this is what we need to do, and then go over to the Hicksville Center and say, hey, why don't you do this and let them do it and let them.
That's where the problem lies.
Let them.
That's the circumventing the.
If Lindsay's got a couple of areas and she's thinking they want to put it, and you pick an area and just go, okay, that's yours, give it to them.
Yeah, we want to raise the money, we don't care how it really gets done.
Right.
We would like to have a lot of the say on how we would like it and also involve the community.
But like Taylor says, if we go prevailing wage, you're gonna spend twice the money. We could have twice the, the park if, if it was done in private money.
I guess that's something.
I'll double check it, I can quickly get that answered.
Before we can move too much further because before you get into the location and, and dollars and everything else, I think that, that needs sorted out, but I would be in favor in picking the location and rolling with it instead of trying to, the more, the more you go walking down the path of, well, it could be here, it could be here, what do you think, what do you think, what, what do you think, what do you think? Let's pick, let's pick a spot and move and move forward.
The only thing you need, you, you need to be close to the water and close to a drain. That's the biggest thing because you, you know, you can't, you can't set it clear back in, in the world like where we talked about soccer fields and stuff years ago. You can't do that because the plumbing is gonna cost you an arm and a leg, it's gonna cost you half the project to get it plumbed up.
I'll, I'll mention the locations that we had talked about at the park board meeting, I'm not part of the park board, but the. The locations were the current basketball courts and relocating basketball courts and then also looking in the grassy area in between the pavilion and where the pool sits currently. It sounds like there were some conversations about restrictions that were placed on that grassy area a long time ago when the pavilion was built, but it doesn't sound like anybody knows what those restrictions are. That was basically, everybody just said you can't build in that area.
Sacred ground.
Sacred ground, but nobody can actually find any documents. Had to do with pavilion.
Owens.
The family, but.
I mean, you have to relocate the basketball court together.
I talked to.
Is there any?
I talked to Kirk Collins about that, of course Lisa, that's her grandfather, and they talked to the family and it might have been mentioned at the time and I touched base with, Cory and I talked a little bit about it and there, as far as you can see, there's no, no records.
Cheryl has all the paperwork on that, she can do some checking for us, she's, she's already said she can do it.
Nobody asked me.
So the thought there was putting up where the basketball courts are, I know it's kind of seems like a lofty project where it seems like nobody wants to decide on what to do with the pool yet and it's, it makes no sense to sit around, let's have another meeting, let's have another meeting, let's decide what we're gonna do when they're ready to go. So if we put it where the basketball courts are now, it should, Taylor actually came up with it and it's a wonderful option. It's a confined area, so you're talking, who uses splash pad, kids usually eleven and under, right? The bathroom's right there, the Froggy Park's right there, the pavilion's there, so moms, moms can sit under. It also solves a problem that, from the time I've been on the park board and even when I took my son Jack to the Froggy Park, there's an issue every year of pre-teens or teenagers down at the park with their language and their graffiti, and if you relocate them somewhere else, then maybe that won't, that won't be the issue. Less caused, it's a really, it's an idealistic, I think, place, place to put it. And so the question then is, one thing we decided as a park board was we're not, we don't even want to see any of this started till the basketball courts.
Have any location.
Have relocation. And we thought of either by the, there are really three great locations, by the Little League Field, by the area that you were talking about, and that would put it by the sand courts. The third option, I'm not gonna be popular for this at all, would be, I'm not, and the part that makes most sense to me is down by the softball's fields where we took that old McDonald's equipment down. Now, the thing is, is the softball association says they're going to put a different field there, but I haven't seen any fundraising or any plans or anything in the three years I've gone on.
I don't think we can do that because that's, you're at county property, you, you told them you were gonna put, put sensory equipment in that area if they let us take down the playground.
And then the softball association came and said they didn't want anything replaced there.
I don't, it's kind of hard to tell the Defiance Metropolitan, we're gonna put sensory stuff in that area and then not, and then put basketball courts there. It's not our property.
I don't think the, I don't, as much as we've talked to the Defiance, I think you're making an issue where there isn't one. Exactly.
Well, why would the basketball courts have to be relocated, could the splash pad, that's a big yard out there. Could that splash pad be fitted in there?
Well, the concern was if you put it where the, like that old, like Pee Wee Field used to sit, that's just grass, you gotta worry about foul balls and such from the baseball fields. Then you also have, so if you shifted basketball courts away from where the, like you say, you just put the splash pad where the courts are, push the courts over, you're still have the intermeshings of, of crowds.
Right.
And you've got more of a family-friendly environment versus not so family-friendly, so that was the thought. And I know Cory brought up one of the location for a splash pad and that was the elementary school lots in between the church and the fashion park, that was another, another thought as a possible location.
But as far as the sensory equi, I can tell you, I don't understand the issue that you didn't need their permission to take it right now and the Defiance, we're still talking about to them whether they even want to have ownership of that property still, so.
I just remember something I got said about sensory equipment at one time, I gotta go with there.
There's, there's one thing that, that I haven't heard anybody mention and it's, it's a, it's a big thing, well, besides that.
Parking.
Parking. You're gonna have, I mean, if, if it's, and if you went to all of the other different towns, Jim, grandkids, I mean, every mom brings one kid in four cars. They bring four cars, one mom. And you're just, the, the, it's gonna take a pretty good sized parking lot.
Well, you have the parking lot there beside the pool, there's a, there's a walkway that goes up there.
Beautiful.
With that location, you actually have, you can utilize two existing parking lots.
Have you never been uptown? Everybody has to park in front of the store they want to go to.
John, I can walk, so I don't know, like, I have no.
You're one in, you're one in few. Everybody has to park, all those people that go, this, this will get me in trouble. All those people that go to that exercise place, they have to park in front, they won't park across the street, down the street to park in front.
Well, I think if you're taking your children with a splash pad and play on park equipment and you're getting them out, so I don't think walking the other, the extra thirty yards up a path that's already there is gonna be an issue, that should be.
I, I would say, I think, my opinion would be the basketball courts is one of the best locations for that because you can utilize two existing parking lots.
So my question is, if you move the basketball courts that you guys have said, drawl issues, drawl a stronger crowd, if you tuck that deeper into the park versus it being on a main road where cars are driving by and they're kind of watching what's going on, are you then just moving the issue deeper to the park where there's gonna be less people seeing it? Are you gonna end up with potentially more graffiti?
Hoodlums.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, what do you think?
Call the kids that yell, um, hoodlums. I, I think that you're just moving them to a location where there would be basketball courts, tennis courts.
But then why move it, because you were saying move it to keep them separate, those two age groups, keep them separate, but that's gonna be even more.
I just think it solved, it served a dual purpose, I think it's a beautiful location for it and then it also, it separates the crowds, separates the crowds a little bit. So now those kids that play basketball will be by the skate park, they'll be by the tennis courts, they'll be by the sand courts, all the courts will kind of be in one area and then smaller kids and families. And then smaller kids and families can be by another area. I don't, I don't think that there's such a massive graffiti issue going on that it's, I mean, you can speak to that.
We don't have, we, we had the one incident last year.
Yeah, I just. A lot of it, Troy, is the language and.
Oh, yeah, I know. We, we utilize it. I mean, I, I get that.
Yeah, so this, this is just a thought. And I just, I agree with Taylor. Instead of having a meeting after meeting with the expressions through the foundation.
Have we looked at prices on what it's going to cost to pour another?
That has not happened, but does this, does the basketball, doesn't that need resurfacing anyways? So.
I, I personally, I mean, we've already been down there several times. My son and I have been down there several times this year already. We walk from our house with a basketball dribbling all the way down. I would hate for it to go away just because it needs resurfaced. Like I.
Well, it's not going away.
Right, right, right. But I'm saying like to tear it up would cost more than to just resurface it.
I think the idea is sort of grouping age groups. So I, I think there's. I, I'm certainly not necessarily saying that it needs to go like up at the soccer fields.
Hey, Taylor, Dick can't stay much longer. So can we maybe get to him and then circle back, Jen Saki it back, circle back to this?
I think we're all, I'm not speaking for everyone, but I think majority of everyone in the council is all really interested in the splash pad. I think we need to figure out what Troy can look up for money raised. And if there's great money available. And then once we can figure that out, we can figure out how much money could be possible and what size and location.
Well, let's not waste Dick's, Dick's trip up here. Let's hear what he got to say.
I did have, I did have one last thing. I had several people from the Hicksville Community Service Center reach out to me also about the splash pad. Have they reached out to you? Because they talked about having funding and being a part of this.
Yes, they, we had heard her, her person forward about that, yes.
Okay. So you've been in contact with them? Awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
So I think we're all agreements. Splash pad, great. Can we give the park board the authority to where to put it? We gave them ideas. Think we should give them that?
I don't think we should write it in stone.
Well, that's why we got a park.
Bring, bring it back and say, hey, this is, this is what we would really like to do. And unless it's something really, I don't know, out of the question, why.
Personally, I think Karen's got something real quick.
I just really quick want to say something that we haven't talked about that we need to keep in the back of our mind is we need restrooms for this splash pad. And we also need changing rooms. So for a location, I mean, it's just something that you, you do have to talk about and like defiance is. Defiance meant one point one, but they had, had a really nice building added to theirs. So I just wanted to say that because we hadn't talked about restrooms or changing rooms or any, that's something that we definitely would have to have with that. So anyways, that's.
But it'd be great to have a splash pad. We've been talking about this for how many years? Rotary was going to try it and I think it's great. Need to move along, whatever it takes.
The school's got that building down there that the restroom to get used for football games. I don't know what the rest of the building is used for, but I think that should be used also for restrooms and could be made into changing rooms.
Changing rooms, yeah. Yeah, so I think that's.
It seemed like, I don't know, the school would probably have to approve that, but again, that would be in a good location there also. So.
Okay. So what do you think about just letting the park board go with it, get back with us and get it moving?
Charge ahead and come back. Keep it moving.
Okay. So anything else? Any questions for council for anybody? Richard? Dick, you're up.
Excuse me. So I didn't really plan on being the key speaker here. I thought Taylor was the key speaker here. Uh, but I'll jump in. So what we were talking about with the trail system, the quality of life. As many of you may know, I spend a large part of my time walking in that park. And I have always been amazed how many people use that park for walking. But there's no real trail anywhere. You just kind of venture wherever you want to go. I lived and worked in Waseon for a long time. They developed a trail system through one of their parks. And it is amazing how much they increased the use of their park. Now, they did theirs a little more elaborate than what we would have to at least start. They have part that is asphalt, part that is trail through two small woods that they interconnected. They did all of theirs, like I think Hicksville could, through grant money and through donations. Uh, but in order to do that, I believe the best way to do it would be to start a 501(c)(3). Create, but we'd want the approval of council to do that and then go out and start looking for grants. There are grants out there right now through both the federal government and the state for anything to do with the outdoors. If COVID did one thing, it said to people, you ought to spend more time outside. And there's money out there for that now. So that would be the goal. Now, I don't know, do you have the maps so you can show them?
I got them on my computer. I apologize. I didn't forget to print them off.
So basically what we came up with were two ideas to start. One, looking at your main park, literally kind of drawing an outline around the back, the park, kind of trail it through, so to speak. Uh, you could start there at the Veterans Memorial, kind of go down along, go in behind the church there. Come up along behind the ball diamonds, cross the road, follow the outline. We all agreed that we wanted to stay away from the railroads right away back there. But you already have kind of a hill that you've created back there with old dirt from years past. You could fall along the top of that. When you get down to about where your water system is there, come back, it's kind of southwest maybe a little bit. Come back that direction, come up along the backside of the track, down along the pavilion. Loop around again, come up around behind the ball diamond, the high school ball diamond. Around behind where you're talking about putting the splash pad and connecting back up. Ideally, it would be nice to have that part of the pack, that part of the trail as a hard pack. Something that if mom and dad are taking their kids out, they could easily push a stroller. Or if they've got young ones that want to ride a bicycle, that would be a great place to learn to ride a bike as opposed to being out on the road and getting hit. That would be ideal for that. A second area we talked about was where I believe you have a well field, which I didn't even know you had a well field back there. Uh, and that one would be simple. You could, you could start it to see if you're going to get used by literally a mower through that field. If you made a small parking area, I might want to have some kind of a restroom facility, but I think it could simply be porta pots to start with. And literally cut a mowed path, let people know it's there and see if they'll use it. Now, I know some people were complaining that, well, if you, if you park cars there, you're putting oil in the ground and things like that. I think we're safe. I don't think you're going to interfere with your well that's got to be at least a hundred and forty feet deep. So it would be, it would be an ideal place. It's isolated, it's not being used, it's completely unused. So there's two different areas you could look at. But I think what the committee needs more than the, anything. Is the approval of council to start looking for these grants. Because I'll be honest, I don't want to do all the work getting around the, the organization to do it if you guys are going to say no in the end. Did I miss anything?
Got it. And then just the one thing we're thinking about with the well field. I'm so glad that I had to come present this. I would have sounded like a loser. Um, the well field, we were talking about the millings, right? That that could be something that, once we mow it, that we could, that we could put down, but yeah, I don't.
If you wanted something more than a mowed path, it would be simple to bring in some kind of a milling or some, some kind of a run.
Still need to take, take off your six inches of subsoil.
Right, right. What's that really fine stone that they use for that?
Four elevens?
Four elevens. Something like that could be done. But the milling is if they were free, you could come in, like you said, cut it. And roll, and put it down and then roll it. I will tell you that I walked every day when I, at lunch pretty much, uh, to get away from the court. And there would never be a day where I had those trails in Waseon by myself. There is never a day right now, I don't care what time of day you go to that park. I will not be out there alone. And I bet those two can vouch for it because I saw them the other day. And I literally had to get off of where I was because there were other people coming and I didn't want the dog around them. So it is used well. You, yeah, I've, I've covered it a hundred miles a month. So it, it really would be used.
So basically, it's going to take a, a lot of, they go to the defiance library, call them a seven point, because they now have a, if they go to the defiance public library. But they will sit down with all the grants that are with you. But it's going to take the 501, what, three c, five one c? Maybe four, as a committee, we even move forward, we just need the blessing, I think, trail systems from what we're saying, two to a hundred and two.
Let me ask you this about that. With all of the things that, that the village currently has on its plate with EPA mandates for sewers and stuff. Uh, and, and now we've, we've already give Mr. Schmidt the blessing on, on this, uh. Do we want something else? Do we, do we want to push for the splash pad? The, the, we do it all?
Sure do.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Hicksville can have many things to do.
Well, I think the big thing to, to state right now is nobody's asking the village for money.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that the village is going to be, have to be involved.
I think you go down the road of, there's obviously maintenance that the village will be required to do. But I think you're looking at two quality of life things that are definitely going to attract, there will definitely be some overlap. But you're bringing a quality of life piece from the trail that is typically a different user than what the splash pad's going to be. And I, I think absolutely the village, I, I think the village would get behind both of these projects.
You have probably one of the nicest park systems in Northwestern Ohio. I mean, when I was coaching softball, I hit, I think, every park in Northwestern Ohio at some point. There's nobody has a nicer park than Hicksville. And people from out of town will tell you that. And you're going to add with both of these. And by gosh, that's, that's an awesome project. Having run the pool for years, it was built in nineteen fifty-five, might be time to maybe think about replacing it. Uh, but I do, I agree with you. It should be replaced as opposed to just buried at some point. But those are, that's a great idea as well. Anything else? Because if not, I'm going to get hung when I get home already, but I like to hang a little lower than what it's going to be.
Are you thinking with the 501(c)(3), is that something the city can do or is that?
I'll take care of it. Troy will never even know I did it.
So do we need to vote to give them permission to carry on or just?
Blessing, basically. There's nothing there.
Sir, anybody against?
Nothing formal.
Okay.
Thank you. Take care.
I'll just comment a little bit following that conversation. I am involved in the, the walking trail committee. The idea is to have the nature side, which would be the well field. And obviously, that would be a coordinated effort with where the new wellhead's going to be, where future wellheads are going to be. And the idea would be that's not hard surface at all out there. That's as natural as it gets. Maybe start planting more trees. Make it a little bit more of a nicer park setting than just a grass field. But then the, the park would be a paved trail. So it's almost one of those things where in, in the conversations with the committee. The nature, the nature side or nature trail could get going almost immediately because that would be constructed basically with volunteers. Where it's, might be somebody with a mower or somebody, you know, if it gets a little bit further where there's higher usage. And we think that the asphalt millings will be a good, a, a good, uh, good addition or blessing, that sort of thing. It's not necessarily dedicated park, so it's not something that would really go through park board, but I think that's something that I. As we go down the road of further improvements in that area, I think we'll have to talk a little bit more. But I think that's something that we could just give the blessing to go start mapping trails out now. We've got, we know where the wellheads are going to be. We can sit down with, with Jesse and Cory and coordinate those things. I think that's something that, I, I see no reason why that couldn't get started tomorrow. Obviously, the, if you're getting into asphalt paving and, or, or concrete, or I know there were some concerns with Je, that Jesse had about asphalt leaching as you get around the water treatment plant. I think we can do concrete, right?
Either way, the proposed trail is still going to cross three well lines. And I mean, we've never let anyone do anything in that area and I love the trail idea, but I still don't want anything going in our well field and our treatment campus.
So there's obviously some coordination and planning that needs to happen beyond that. I, I don't think with the folks that are involved in the trails, the trail committee, I don't think there's going to be any issues with that.
Because there's sixty acres after, right? And there's two well.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
No, we're talking the existing, existing one.
And you had pointed that out at the meeting, kind of a redirection.
And with council's blessing, we can move forward with actually, you know, mapping the trail. So then you can. If you have a planned course, then you can chase after dollars, then you can do all of those things. So there's obviously coordination that needs to happen. But we've sort of just been meeting in, in hopes that everybody else is good with it. So I guess at this point, we have the blessing.
Is there going to be buildings when they repave? So they go, so it'll be a lot, should be. If we can get our hands on them. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anything else, Lindsay, or questions?
No, that was, she said if you tear up the basketball court, we can use. Um, no, I just, if council can give the blessing for the trail, like Dick said, we can start other 501, we can start chasing these grants.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just so happy. If you remember where we were at a year ago today, almost to the day, this place was a hot mess express. And it just had two really positive projects for our town. And what draws to the community too? You have a beautiful splash pad park, a beautiful trail system.
And we've got a lot of volunteers that are willing to step up and let's keep it moving.
So Jim or Karen, have you guys, I guess with Kirk talked, do you guys, what do you guys need from the village at this point? Do you need a location, a specific location that says this is exactly where it's going to go to, to go down that path? Did Kirk kind of express any of that?
Yeah, for us to go out and make presentations to whoever the Rotary or whoever, they're not going to work, where's this going to be? And, and see renderings on that location. So.
So what do you guys think from the village? I guess how, how do you guys want to go about making that selection, that site selection?
I would like Cheryl to find out if anything can be done back in that area.
Rotary Park Pavilion area on the other side of the pool. I think that's where I would think it should be.
And then, and then if she has nothing in writing that says that it has to be left alone, that's where it ought to go.
I agree.
So if you're not in favor of putting in for the basketball courts or if.
I like the idea on the other side where the Rotary Park Pavilion, where, where we have the day in the park typically.
Oh, the big empty, or the big field.
Yeah, you're right across from a big parking lot. You're close to the pool, you're close to the restrooms, you're close to the changing area.
What restroom?
Yeah, what restroom?
The pool area.
The area. I wouldn't let my worst enemy walk in that place from my.
There's not a lot of restroom down there in the park.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
It's got to be a nice facility that people feel comfortable bringing their children in.
Well, then Jim, you, I'm, I'm quite confident that, that you really should look at building its own building. You could, you could have a mechanical room, you could have a changing room, uh, two, two bathrooms. Uh, I think that's, in Hicksville, two genders is enough. We don't need anymore. And, uh.
Then you got to build shelter or shade. You know, it's, we can only raise so much money.
Well, that's what, I, I just said that you have a trail system, you have a, a committee that, for a trail system. That's going to chase grants and do all the work, right? You have a, a large donor and you have foundations. The ideal location with the bathrooms, the one hundred thousand dollar bathroom, the, the pavilion, the, the parking. It's honestly where the basketball courts are. You went down there today and you got kind of excited about how pretty it looked, right? So what are we asking the village to pony up, moving a basketball court? Out of these things that are brought to make the village great, we're asking, that's what you're asking for. That's the one thing. And it just blows my mind that that's something that would.
So you're saying that we're, we're kind of a pain in your backside just, just talking about this?
Well, just it's irritating around. Yeah, it is.
I think we ought to let the park board do their job, come back. You know, we got some good ideas. We're always going to have differences of opinion on location. It comes to a vote.
So I, I, I guess the question would be, the park board did vote and they recommended the basketball courts. That's where it was left.
So you're going to tear a hundred thousand dollar court out and put it someplace else?
All I'm saying is if, if it goes back to the park board, it's going to come back with the exact same thing. So what are we? I, I, that's why I'm just asking, what's everybody's opinion on how to move forward?
Well, when, you know, when, when, and a lot of, a lot of people play on that basketball court, so, uh, when the phones start ringing, I hope it's not mine.
So I would, I, once again, I'm not even part of the park board. I was just at the meeting. The idea was that the location would be nailed down, court would be moved. We would have that court constructed before anything happens.
Just another hundred thousand you got to raise. Just another $100,000 you got to raise?
It's, I look at the opportunity that the Little League Baseball Association took by the horns there. They raised money for concrete, all that sort of stuff. So, that's, it's just, I don't want that to be an inhibitor because we have to think about the long term, the long term plan of the park. Not just, okay, we've got $100,000 that we need to replace right now. Think about the long term plan of the park, what's best where? Just because it's there right now, it might not be the best spot. I'm not opposed to being where the basketball courts are. I mean, are the village assuming the cost of relocating them? And if so, where's that at in the budget, Cheryl?
Next year.
Would be next year.
Yeah, next spring.
Construction would start in spring.
Basketball courts wouldn't leave this year, maybe they're all summer.
No, and I think that's something to consider, Ron, is the hoops and backboards, those are in dire need of replacement right now. And the court's in dire need of resurfacing. So, we're going to have to allocate dollars towards that anyway. So, if there is a better location for it, I'm all ears.
Could we get by just one court?
I don't think so. Probably not.
Too many.
So, so what if you take that really big lot?
Yeah.
That's empty. And you want to put, the thing is, it's going to, it's going to take, to build a building, what's it going to take? 200?
Probably quarter of a dollar, I guess.
I mean, with restrooms and changing rooms, and you're talking 200, 300,000? I don't know. I'm just throwing out there. But, and in that big open area, move Froggy Park over there too and have that whole area as a younger children's lot. I don't know if Froggy Park could move that or something. I'm just, you're splitting two areas up that are for young kids.
They're 100 standard teen, your kids that want to play on the playground.
And the pavilions there and the basketball courts, there's one, that whole basketball court, there's only one pole that's not leaning. I think Taylor, you just mentioned that, that they need.
I put those posts in 35 years ago.
Now we know why they're leaning.
Yeah. You're right.
Lindsay, do you talk with Defiance Metro often?
Other than park, I do.
You do?
I talk to Jan.
Because we met with them. Did you want to talk about the land? Is that what you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad location for a basketball court where that playground was.
Well, the goal of the softball association with their new concession stand and press box is to have all three of their fields kind of together, like the Little League's doing. And that would cover all three of those fields. They have goals and visions for updating the fields, making them a lot better, you know, used by more people. They want all the softball fields kind of be pulled together. They still have number four out there farther, but that's what their vision is for the future is a nice press box. They can see all three fields. And that's where that one field would have to move up to.
I mean, even the pavilion yard, I say that because at the tennis court, we've got a brand new 200 amp service on one end. You know, it's directional board under there, there's 100 amp service panel there. So, for a basketball court, you'd have plenty of power for your lights. We'd have to set new poles. You know, me personally, I don't want to see asphalt. I'd like to see a concrete basketball court, no more asphalt.
Concrete basketball courts are not really popular.
That's because they cost more.
Well, that and they're hard on the ball, I've been told.
In your age, it would be.
So, we need to give some direction here?
I'm in favor of going down the path of figuring out a new spot for the basketball courts.
As long as that was up and going before the splash pad.
Yeah.
It's going to be next summer, next fall.
Well, the goal would be to start construction on the splash pad next spring is what they're shooting for.
We're voting a bunch in October, you're...
You'll get a cost of relocating the basketball.
Yes, sir. So, okay.
How are the street guys at concrete finishing?
Excellent.
So, we have the blessing, so let the park board do their thing?
Do what, pick a spot or work with them for a spot? I mean...
Just turn them loose. It's what they're there for.
And then they come back and say, this is what we're going to do?
Here you're done.
What was, I'm sorry.
Looking for the best spot for the splash pad, which kind of already...
I think you've already picked it.
So, when it comes to the splash pad, we'll still need a building. If we go with the recirculating, we'll still need some type of building, mechanical room there.
I would think changing rooms.
Restrooms.
I want to do restroom, yeah, we got restrooms up there. I wouldn't mess with the restroom.
I think the biggest, the next biggest task at hand would be finding that location for the basketball courts. It sounds like one of the suggestions was that either the Metro Park Board ground or closer to the sand volleyball courts opposite the tree line in that corner.
Jim had spoke, said that he spoke to, I'm not, I don't want to spread fake news, but didn't you just say he spoke to Lisa? And she's, that's his granddaughter.
I talked to Kirk Collins.
If they don't have a problem with it being in that area, to me, that's ideal. Tennis courts and the skate park, pickleball courts, the volleyball courts and the basketball courts all in.
Thanks, we don't have far for power, that's for sure, that's right there.
Cheryl's going to check on that.
Sure.
Cheryl has the paperwork.
Okay.
Thank you. Enough, you can move on. You got enough information, you move on, right? That's the main thing. Any other questions for any committee? Okay, where are we at?
Fiscal officer.
Fiscal officer.
I'll have three items. Doing pretty good with your spending.
Yeah, don't read it.
$100,000 basketball court.
I'm watching it. So far this year, we've...
One guy sleeping with your daughter, you know?
Okay, never mind.
Okay, the meeting continues. Go ahead, Cheryl.
I'm done.
You're done? Okay. You have the fund status, cash summary and all that, media count, correspondence. Any questions for Cheryl?
Was there a decision made on phone systems?
It was a drawl.
Yes. But I haven't gone the next step yet, so I'll let you know when that happens.
Who was the winner? I didn't hear.
That's because I didn't say it.
I know. That's what I was kind of trying to choose for as an answer.
Okay, moving along.
Good if a body of council doesn't deserve an answer, that's right.
She's had a rough day.
Tell Iowa I have a rough day though.
No, she has, just back off. Okay, anything else for Cheryl? Okay, my report on a health department meeting a week ago, and the numbers are definitely dropping. But January of 2022 was the highest rate of new cases. I mean, I was surprised, but since then, it's really dropped, which is good. I want to honor the Slattery Oil Company. They've been in business over 62 years. They got sold, so, you know, they were a big asset to this community. Also, I want to form a new committee. I haven't named it, but it's going to study the new city complex. So, I'll let the committee kind of decide, but that's what the gist is. On this committee, it's going to be two citizens at large, which will be Kent Miller, Cheryl Smith, and then Ron Beverly, Eric Bassett and Taylor Klepper will be representing on the council. Street property and sidewalk was doing this, but I thought it was just too much. And I wanted some outside people helping citizens, so I guess you could call it a study, new committee study on new city complex. Any questions for me? Anything else needs to be brought before this council? I'll make much to adjourn in a second.
Charlie.
Cheryl wants to stay.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.